Good evening. This Olive Branch Board of Alderman Meeting for October the 21st is hereby called to order. I'm appreciative of our Pastor Jonathan Doolin from Emmanuel Baptist Church being with us today. I'll ask that we stand. He's going to lead us in an invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which I'll lead.
One verse of scripture.
This is Psalm 127. It says this, "Unless the Lord builds the house, those who build it labor in vain; unless the Lord watches over the city, the watchman stays awake in vain." Let's pray. Father, we thank you for your care over us as individuals, God, but for your care over us as a city. We thank you. God, I thank you for these who who take seriously, God, leadership and influence in our city, but we recognize your great power and our great dependence upon you. I pray that this meeting and all that's discussed here would bring you the glory that you so richly deserve and would serve the welfare and the care of the people of Olive Branch. God, and we just give you thanks for the privilege that it is to influence. God, and I pray that we would take care and do so with fear and trembling. God, and we just commit this time to you. Pray that you'd get the glory that you deserve and the reverence that you deserve in each heart. We pray it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Salute. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the flag of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thanks again Pastor for leading the invocation. Just as a reminder for guests and participants, this is, this meeting is streamed live on YouTube on the city's Olive Branch, Olive Branch City YouTube channel and also archive for playback. And those of us with microphones should have the microphone color set on green when we're speaking so everyone can hear the information we're sharing. Ms. Stewart, would you conduct roll call?
Aldridge, Collins, Dickerson, Earhart, Gammage, Hamilton, Wallace.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. All present, so obviously a quorum's established. Let's make recognition, like to make recognition of our Olive Branch chapter, the Order of Demolay, Oak Grove Lodge 293. With us tonight are several members of the Demolay organization. Our past Grand Master, Mr. Greg Clem, thank you for being with us tonight. Mr. Clem, anything you want to share from the lecturing about the organization so that people here will know a little bit more about what type faith, hope, and charity that the organization stands for?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our Demolay chapter meets at the Masonic Temple across the road on the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month. It's open to young men between the ages of nine and 21, and we teach seven precepts, filial love, reverence for sacred things, courtesy, camaraderie, friendship, benevolence, and patriotism. The young men plan their own events, raise their own money, do their own charitable work, including helping clean up the city and set up a booth if they're hungry drunk, and had a Nerf ball going, and had good participation, and we put signs out in the city as well. So, we're here for you, and hopefully you're here for us, and we would welcome you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Pastor Master Clem. And I understand this is the largest organization quantity-wise of young men throughout all 82 counties, throughout the whole state. This is the largest organization. We have some with us tonight. I thank you, young men, for caring enough to be here, and thank you for the projects you've done to help the city, help your neighborhood, help your community. It's very much appreciated. Board, you have before you the regular minutes of our October the 7th, 2025 meeting. Any questions, comments, or motions on those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Ms. Hamilton, motion to approve. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Gammage. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Following that, on the agenda, you have our consent agenda, items one through 24. Any questions on items one, two, twenty, one through 24, or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as is?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Earhart, motion to approve. Second, Mr. Wallace. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries to approve it as is. Planning Commission, Old Business, consideration of application for a final plat for Ainsley Point subdivision submitted by Andy Richardson, R&amp;H Engineering and Surveying LLC on behalf of Sunset Creek Farms LLC, Kevin Bynum, property owner. The request is to create a single residential lot, 0.78 plus or minus acre. The subject property is owned R1 Single Family Residential District. It is located at the northeast corner of Hamilton Circle North and Hamilton Circle West, known as 6602 Hamilton Circle North. It was tabled for this meeting on September the 2nd, for this meeting today, I believe. Is it active, or are you asking for it to be tabled indefinitely? Mr. Song?
Yes, Mayor. He's asking that it be tabled indefinitely because they have not yet resolved the right-of-way issues. The right-of-way dedication is necessary to create this T-intersection. That is still being discussed between him and the owner of the property to the west. So, he's asking that this be tabled indefinitely.
Thank you, Dr. Song. And the board may remember there's been a couple of settings for this, and we have multiple property owners, and at this point, no agreement on right-of-way, et cetera. So, it's going to be tabled indefinitely. Mr. Dye, we need a motion for that?
Yes, sir.
If there's a motion and second from the board to table this one indefinitely?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gammage, motion. Second, Ms. Hamilton. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries to table indefinitely. Next item, set a public hearing for application for a zoning map amendment submitted by Dale Wilson, property owner. The request is to rezone the property from C4 Planned Commercial District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. The 1.50 plus or minus acre subject property is located on the south side of Goodman Road, approximately 520 feet east of Autumn Oaks Drive, Lot Number Two of Roy Hill Subdivision, known as 6339 Goodman Road East. A public hearing date to be set for November the 18th. This is one of the consent agenda items. And B would be consent as well, board, if you're in agreement to that, to set both of these for a public hearing date on November the 18th. Is the board in agreement on consent of these two items? Mr. Wallace, motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Who was that? Mr. Collins, my apologies. Second, Mr. Collins. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Item two, consideration of application for the fifth revision of Mineral Wells Commercial Subdivision submitted by Tracy Blaney, property owner. The request is to combine lots two and three into a single lot of 1.07 plus or minus acres. The subject property is owned C2 Highway Commercial District and is located at the southwest corner of MWC Road and Highway 178, known as 7067 Highway 178. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I demand before you is a request to consider the final plat that seeks to combine these two existing lots for the Mineral Wells subdivision. This existing lot two is 0.39 acres, existing lot three 0.68 acres. These two lots are at the southwest corner of the intersection of MWC Road and Highway 178, just south of State Line Road in the city of Olive Branch. The application essentially seeks to combine those two lots into one lot. The property is owned C2 Highway Commercial District. The current intended use is for the lot as combined will be used as an office for Red River Express, which provides contract logistics for FedEx. All utilities are available. Water is available on the property. There's a building on the side already, so it has water, seawall, all the infrastructure is there. There will be no additional street construction. Access already exists on Highway 178 and from MWC Drive Road. This is actually a driveway at this particular location. No variances, deviations, or waiver to the requirements of the subdivision regulations are requested as part of this particular plat. It meets the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations of the city. The Planning Commission reviewed these requests at its meeting on October 14 and unanimously recommended approval, subject to these conditions one to six. Condition number six should add, being that any freestanding sign must be monument style, not exceeding 12 feet in height. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Song. Board, any questions on the staff report?
Yes, Mayor, I have, I have one. Dr. Song, this is for office use, taking that building. Is the parking lot to the northwest, I'm assuming for employee parking, not any tractor-trailer or truck parking on that lot?
No, sir. This will be for employee parking. They actually obtained a variance from the Board of Zoning Adjustment, allowing them to have an eight-feet-high fence, intend to fence the entire property.
Okay. That's good. So, so no tractor-trailer or heavy equipment would be permitted on that parking lot?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Earhart. Any additional questions from the board? Is the applicant or applicant representative here tonight to add information? Any questions or motions on this particular item?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Dickerson, motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Earhart. Any questions? All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Consideration of application for the final plat for Villages at South Branch Phase Two subdivision submitted by Henry Porter, W.H. Porter Consultants, PLLC, on behalf of Michelle Terahune, South Branch Development LLC property owners. The request is to subdivide 11.86 plus or minus acres into 43 lots and three common open spaces. The subject property is owned R3 Planned Residential District and is located at the east end of Sipsey Way and north of Brahim Drive. Staff report?
Thank you, sir. Before you, is a request to consider the final plat for the Villages at South Branch subdivision. In terms of general layout of where we are in the city, this is Stonecrest subdivision. The Villages at South Branch subdivision is just south of Stonecrest subdivision, east of Pleasant He Road, west of Davidson Road. This is where you got the, the middle school. The Board in the past approved Phases One, A, B, and C of the subdivision. Those lots have been plotted and recorded. The application before you is to approve the final plat for Phase Two, which will consist of 43 lots and three common open spaces on a total of 11.86 acres. The property is owned R3 Planned Residential District, which means the final plat must meet the requirements for the Villages at South Branch project text and preliminary layout plan. The Board approved the preliminary plat on April 16, 2024. This is the final plat for the Phase Two of the development I submitted for the Board's approval. It will consist of nine village lots, minimum 6,250 square feet. This will be these nine lots in this particular area. Access to these lots will be through, these lots will be railloaded. It's an alley that was required in the preliminary development plan for these nine lots at this location. There will be 34 college lots, minimum 8,750 square feet. These other lots shown this yellowish color. And all the lots will be used for detached single-family residential as was required and approved in the project text for the Villages at South Branch. In terms of infrastructure, Bankhead Drive has been extended northward, as shown. This is new street extension completed. The surroundabout, Sipsey Way has been extended eastward, and it intersects with Bankhead Drive at this location with this surroundabout. All of this has been constructed. This surroundabout is supposed to be landscaped. Landscaping has not yet been installed on site. Other utilities, infrastructures such as fire hydrant, water lines, seawall lines, those have been put in place. This is an alley, the alley that will provide access to the nine village lots. That alley has been constructed. The Board did require that this alley should be constructed to the standard of a public street, basically, to avoid the sort of V-shaped, very thin asphalt and deteriorated situation that we have for alleys in Stonecrest. So, this has been constructed, and the city engineer will require further verification of that alley before the plat is recorded. If there are any issues related to it, then they will need to be fixed appropriately. The alley cannot be bonded because it will not be a public street. That will be private for, to be owned and maintained by the homeowners. The Planning Commission did review this application at its meeting on October 14 and unanimously recommended approval, subject to these conditions one to five. Condition number three, being that the developer shall submit to the city of Olive Branch a letter of credit of sufficient amount to cover any public infrastructure that has, or may not have yet been completed, plus 25% contingency before the plat is recorded. Secondly, the developer was required to add a note on the plat, providing the length and area of all new street sections before the plat is presented to the Board. That has been done. So, staff recommends approval, subject to conditions one, two, three, and five. Condition number four has been completed. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Song. Any questions, board? Is the applicant or applicant's representative here to add any information? This is the final plat, correct?
Yes, sir.
Questions or motions on this application?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Earhart, motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Ms. Hamilton. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Dr. Song, is there, are there items, properties that still be cleaned up? I know there were discussions that they might have been cleaned. Do we need to review any of these tonight?
Yes, Mayor. All of them have been. All these four properties have been cleaned up. So, staff recommendation is really that the Board take no action tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone here on behalf of these properties, just in case? No action required on that particular item. Moving down the, the agenda, item five, board, this is consideration for action on motion determining the actual cost of cleaning the following properties, determining whether to assess a penalty and to declare whether the debt would be collected by civil suit or placed as a lien on the property taxes. These are properties that, over the past year, have been cleaned with either city labor or contract labor, and staff's asking for your approval to go forward, place on a lien, and considering penalties for these properties. Mr. Dye, anything else?
No, sir. You, you covered it. That's, the only distinction is you've got, the first list is the privately-owned list of properties where a penalty can be assessed. And the second list is the list of properties that are owned by the state of Mississippi, where we can submit to the state our actual cost, but state law prohibits the imposition of a penalty against the state. So, you've got two different lists. That list of privately-owned properties, our historical practice has been to forward those to the tax collector for the addition onto the tax bills that will be due at the end of the year. And that's what I would recommend the Board do, is approve the list as presented with those standard penalties that the city has historically applied and for authorization to turn the list in once approved to the tax collector for collection.
Thank you, Mr. Dye. And the, the state-owned properties, if I remember correct, they have a vehicle to do this, but no fund to pay the penalty, right?
That's correct. The state law says that we can request the state to make this whole, but the fund is, has not been funded, so to speak.
Very good. Thank you. Board, if you're in agreement, is there a motion to, to move forward with these penalties? Mr. Collins, motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Wallace. Any discussion?
Quick question. Oh, the one that's like for the state, are those right-of-way areas or common areas or?
A lot of them would be detention ponds or other non-buildable properties that are still taxable properties. And then, at some point, the properties went into delinquency on taxes. It would have rolled to a tax sale. It may have been bought by an out-of-town purchaser at a tax sale. And when that purchaser realized that it was an unbuildable lot, they quit paying the taxes, and eventually it would default to the state through the non-payment of taxes. And then, that would result in the property still needing upkeep in the city. Basically, the analysis has been that the public good of getting the property cleaned outweighs the relatively small cost to the city for cleaning it. And that's why we're continuing to clean some of these properties.
Um, Wallace, the one on the first agenda, on the first list, shows the owner is David Lassiter. He purchased that retention pond several times in a tax sale. And then, ones at the bottom belong to the state, that last one, the Gardens Plantation, that is another common open space retention pond that nobody ever bought. But somebody bought a pig and a polk and bought that retention pond, thinking they would buy a piece of property.
And, and the board's familiar with, we have people that buy online at tax sales, and then all of a sudden, they realize what they've got, and they want to donate it to the city, which they'd like our help in keeping it clean, and we don't have a use for a retention pond either. So, it's kind of a sticky wicket, I guess, and the person that ends up with the property may eventually let it go back to the tax sale again, and it's a vicious circle, like Mr. Dickerson mentioned. But there was a motion and second, correct?
Yes, correct. Collins, Wallace.
Collins, Wallace, motion second. Is there any more discussion, any questions? If not, all in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Consideration of recommendation to approve the final payment in the amount of $99,563.13, including retainage on a contract with W&amp;T Contracting Corporation, and accept the project as complete for the project referred to as Lit Creek Interceptor Sewer. Mr. Swims?
Yes, sir. This is the final payment. This is the closeout. This is for the sewer that's given us ample capacity now, going from Church Road to the Ross Road Treatment Plant. So, it's a 36-inch line, and also that existing 15 is still there. So, this closes this out, and we do recommend payment and to make this project complete.
Thank you, Mr. Swims. Board, any questions or motions?
Motion claimed.
Mr. Collins, motion?
Second.
Second. Mr. Dickerson. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Item two, under New Business, consideration of recommendation to approve change order number seven on the contract with A&amp;B Construction in the amount of $49,211.36, increasing the contract amount from $8,734,695.31 to $8,783,906.67, and extending the contract time by 15 calendar days, making the new completion date April the 15th, 2026, for the project referred to as the Olive Branch Public Works Building. Mr. Swims?
There was three items that are listed on your sheet there, which was installation of joint sealants that turned down around the dumpster pad and partition support system. We had reviewed this with the contractor and the engineer and determined that these were needed upgrades. So, we are recommending that we approve this change order and move forward with this for Public Works.
Questions, board? Motions?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Gammage, motion to approve. Second, Mr. Collins. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed. Motion carries. Item three, consideration of recommendation to approve amendment on the contract with Fisher &amp; Arnold Incorporated in the amount of $49,000, excuse me, $47,950 for additional construction, engineering, and inspection services, CEI, increasing the contract amount from $90,000 to an amount not to exceed $187,950 for the project referred to as the Maywood Water and Gas Improvements for the city of Olive Branch. Mr. Swims?
We had reviewed a request that Fisher &amp; Arnold has sent us, looking at the number of calendar, looking at the number of calendar days we expect to finish this project, the number of hours they intend to put in per week for construction, engineering, and inspection. This fell in line with what we were asking for. They had actually had several months before that they had not put charges to the city on. So, we thought that this was a fair, and we are requesting improvement for this change order.
Thank you, Mr. Swims. Board, any questions? Or motions?
Motion to approve.
Who was, I'm sorry, who was that? Mr. Earhart, motion to approve. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Collins, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Board and guests, before we go into executive session or before consideration of going into executive session, Demolays, any questions you have of the board tonight, your lessons in government, I believe, if I understood the assignment right? Any questions?
I would really like to thank the opportunity to be here, and everybody who's been with us tonight. I think it's been a real learning experience for us all, especially for us that have never actually sat in any kind of meeting like this, and I think we can definitely see parallels and differences from your meeting, or a lot smaller scale, we can down in. But I, again, just thank all of you for being able to be here, and thank you.
Thank you for your input.
Any mayor or Alderman candidates out there?
Y'all are way too smart for that. Well, thanks for being with us tonight. If nothing else, board, is there a motion to leave regular session with the intentions of going into executive session? Mr. Wallace, motion? Second, Ms. Aldridge, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Is there a motion to go into executive session with the intentions of discussing personnel matter in the dispatch department, personnel matter in the planning and building department, personnel matter in the gas maintenance department, personnel matters in the water maintenance department, personnel matters in the fire department, personnel matter in the court department, and personnel matter in the police department? Is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss those items? Mr. Collins, motion? Mr. Wallace, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are in executive session.